I'd like to call to order the June 4, 2019, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ms.
Here.
Saleh.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. For the benefit of the audience and whoever's watching on television, I'd like to note that Mazaahir Saleh cannot be here. She is in Sudan right now, and I don't know if you're paying attention to the news, but it's not very good coming out of Sudan. There's quite a bit of violent activity, I guess, being directed toward Sudanese -- members of the Sudanese population. So we certainly hope that Mazaahir is safe and healthy, and that her friends are as well. So with that, we can turn to item number two, proclamations. We have three proclamations to read tonight. I'll begin with the first. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ communities across the nation annually celebrate pride in their culture and community in the month of June, and whereas the annual celebration of pride began as a collective protest for the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals and communities, and whereas the annual celebration of pride began as a collective freedom in expressing gender identity, and whereas the national tradition of celebrating pride in June is a tribute to the Stonewall riots of June 1969, which are remembered as the launch of the modern LGBTQ+ rights movement, and whereas transgender people of color, including Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and Stormy Delarveri, were primary leaders in the Stonewall expression of just treatment for LGBTQ+ people, and often gave their work and lives to the cause, and whereas the city of Iowa City recognizes the many LGBTQ+ lives that continue to be lost each year in pursuit of living out their authentic identities, in particular transgender people of color, and whereas the city of Iowa City welcomes and accepts people of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and culture of these citizens, and whereas each year Iowa City Pride brings together thousands of LGBTQ+ people from across Iowa and beyond to celebrate their shared identities and experiences, and whereas Iowa City Pride will be celebrating the city's 49th Annual Pride Festival and the 50th Anniversary of Stonewall on June 10 through June 16 of 2019. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the month of June to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Iowa City, and encourage residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ+ community face, and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. Is there anybody here to accept this proclamation? Hey, come on up.
President Nathan.
That one person can come up.
Oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for doing that, and hope to see everybody out on June 15.
And June 10 through the 16th for all of Pride Week.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Second proclamation. Whereas Freemasonry, the world's oldest and largest fraternal organization, was born in 1717 in England, came to America early in the 18th century, was established in Iowa in 1840, and the Grand Lodge of Iowa of ancient, free, and accepted Masons was founded in 1844, and whereas the members of the Iowa City City Council are pleased to extend special recognition to the Freemasons of Iowa in general, and the members of Iowa City Lodge Number Four in particular, on the 175th anniversary of the founding of the Grand Lodge of Iowa, and whereas the teachings of Freemasonry are the boundless principles of brotherly love, relief, and truth, and by the outward expression of these principles promotes fellowship, compassion, concern for others, and service to God, family, country, and self, and whereas dedicated to the highest ideals of brotherhood and service, the Freemasons of Iowa City have distinguished themselves through their commitment to excellence and being the best they can be in all respects of their lives, and whereas throughout their history, Masonic groups have maintained a reputation for integrity, reliability, and devotion, and through their charitable efforts relieved the distress of those less fortunate, and provided Masonic scholarships for future leaders of our state and nation. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the month of June to be Masonic Month in Iowa City, and recognize Iowa City Lodge Number Four and the Freemasons of Iowa as they celebrate the 175th Anniversary of the Grand Lodge of Iowa, and extend sincere gratitude to its officers and members, past and present, for their accomplishments, commitment, and dedication to the Iowa City community. Is there anyone here to accept? There he is. Come on up.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, we have one last proclamation, which has to do with National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and before reading the proclamation, I want to take a few moments to remember and honor the 12 public employees who were killed, and four others who were critically injured in the mass shooting that took place in Virginia Beach, Virginia, last Friday. So if -- please go along with me and just spend a moment or two reflecting on them.
Thank you. So now, here comes a little bit of theater. Bear with me. Of course, there's more theater in the back of the room because there's a tall building in orange. I don't know what that's about. All right. I'm wearing orange. I wonder why. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday, and whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the thousands, countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life, and whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7, the first Friday in June in 2019, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2019, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby declare June 7, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage Iowa Cityans to honor all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to support efforts to prevent such violence in the future. So is there someone here to accept the proclamation?
There's a whole lot of people wearing orange. This is great. So I'm very pleased to thank Mayor Throgmorton and the Iowa City Council for their support of Wear Orange and Moms Demand Action. Over the past few years specifically, we have received encouragement and support in ways that have allowed us to spread the word about who we are and what we're working for to reduce and ultimately end gun violence in this country. Last year, with the assistance of the Downtown Association, we were able to engage with over 80 downtown businesses who either turned their windows orange, or placed Wear Orange flyers or placards so that they could be seen by customers or passersby. This year, our local group is partnering with the South District Neighborhood Association, helping out with the neighborhood cleanup, and also raising money for their mural project by selling Wear Orange t-shirts. And I'm really proud to announce that we have raised over $1,400 for the mural project GoFundMe, and our goal is to continue to collaborate with the South District Neighborhood Association as the mural comes to fruition and beyond. And I just think I speak for all of us when I say how grateful we are for your support. I know there are cities and towns in Iowa who refuse to read the proclamation, and it means a lot to those of us who are trying to do this work that we have your support. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We can turn to considering adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended. These are items three through eight on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Second by Cole.
Yep.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Item nine, community comment. This is a moment when anyone can address us with regard to any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda. I'd only ask you to come up and state your name, and then take not more than three minutes to express your concerns, or questions, or whatever it is that's on your mind. So who's first? Charlie's up. Hi, Charlie.
Mayor Throgmorton, council members. I'm Charlie Eastham, 953 Canton Street in Iowa City. I wanted to ask the council to -- at your informal session that you'll enter after this formal session is over, to relook at your Affordable Housing Action Plan tax exemption recommendations that you just discussed before this formal session began, and ask you if you would ask the Housing and Community Development Commission to give a recommendation to the council about the staff's proposal before proceeding with asking the staff to go ahead with it. I, with -- out of respect with Jeff and Simon, who I'm sure did exemplary work in putting this proposal together, I think there's a couple of things that struck my mind as I looked at it. The first time I had a chance to look at this was Thursday, and I think that's true for most of us, too. The major thing, I think, that I would want to examine is that the proposal actually would make -- would use property tax funds to reduce the rents, and would allow people who have up to 60% of their median income to rent those units at a reduced rate. Actually, the 2010 census data shows that in Iowa City especially, there are some 1,000 households who are paying more than half of their income for their rental housing cost. There are maybe 10 households who have incomes of 60% of their median income, who are paying more than half of their income for rental housing cost. So to me, there's definitely a question about whether or not it's the best use of our scarce property tax resources to be subsidizing rents for higher-income households when there's a great need for rental subsidies for lower-income households, and that's some of the things that I think HCDC should have a chance -- would help you make a better decision, and the staff and the city make a better decision, if we had a chance to review the proposal before going ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Good evening, Brandon.
Brendan Ross. Them that's got shall get, them that's not shall lose. So the Bible says, and it still is news. Mama may have, and Papa may have, but God bless the child God is own, God is own. Rich relations give a crust of bread and such. You can help yourself, but don't take too much. Mama may have, and Papa may have, but God bless the child, the child God is own, God is own. Why are we building unaffordable housing? Why are the rich getting more? Why can't we make 50 units of all affordable housing? I have a friend who left Iowa City after 15 years of living here where he loves to live because he couldn't afford it. All those 15 years, he worked hard at jobs that were hard, on his feet, but he had to move out to Coralville and access transportation and other things. And though I know this council is an open-minded council, and it has a progressive feel, which means that you are considering people, I think this is a strong problem that needs to be resolved. And next time somebody wants to put up a glass tower like a Chauncey Swan, you should just say, "Sure, throw it up. All affordable." Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Good evening, Megan.
Megan Alter, 936 Aspen Court, Iowa City. I'm here as a commissioner, along with Charlie Eastham, to request that the tax abasement project return to -- sorry, return to HCDC so that we can review it. It's something that we haven't looked at yet, and while there's a lot that seems to be good about it, I think that it does warrant the commission to take a look at it and be able to provide some recommendations as well. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Pastor Smith, it can't be a topic that's on the formal meeting agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so we're going to move to item 10, planning and zoning matters. Item 10A, rezoning south of Interstate 80, west of North Dubuque Street, and east of Mackinac Drive, commonly referred to as Forest View. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 73.15 acres of property located south of Interstate 80, west of North Dubuque Street, and north of Foster Road, from interim development single-family residential, IDRS; low-density single-family residential, RS5; low-density multifamily residential, RM12; and high-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay, OPDRS12-2, OPDRS12 for 50.82 acres; highway commercial with a planned development overlay, OPD/CH1 for 20.45 acres; and neighborhood public with a planned development overlay, OPD/P1 for 1.88 acres. This is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Seconded by Cole. Discussion.
Well, I'll just say it's been a long time coming, and glad to see that we're at the final vote, and for the few people that are here from Forest View, I think most of them have come to so many meetings, and we've gone through two positive votes that they've probably decided to stay home tonight, and I don't blame them. But it's exciting to see this finally get passed, and looking forward to the development proceeding.
Yeah. Before anybody else speaks, Susan, thank you, but I forgot to ask if anybody wants to speak out there, so.
Go right ahead.
I'm sure you'd say the same.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Would anybody like to address this topic? Anybody in the audience?
One last time.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so please, other council members, please, go ahead.
Well, this is springtime, and this is normally the time when we plant the seeds for future growth, but I think what this is, is the culmination of a harvest of a lot of incredibly hard work, and we get to pass the vote and say yes, but this really is the product and the harvest of three and a half years of collaborative governance between the city, the developer, and the residents, and if every one of our future development projects could be like this, we are on a very good path forward for growth with dignity. So I really thank you for all the hard work that you've done over this time period.
I think this really speaks to the heart of Iowa City, where the community came out and they expressed their support as well as concerns, but at the end of the day, we come together, and I really feel it was the efforts of a lot of people, and the developers themselves really listening to those that supported it, those that didn't, but didn't, you know, devalue anything that was said, and tried to negotiate and come to a place where the council up here is, you know, supporting it, or has so far. We'll see what the final vote is tonight, but I'm very excited to be a part of this process, and good luck to all of the people that's involved and directly affected, and I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more in the future.
Very, very complex project, which took quite a bit of time to try to sort through and address all the issues, but it's a matter of perseverance and good faith, and I'm pleased to support the project.
Just want to thank again the developers and the property owners for working with the tenants association, the city, and everyone involved to come to a compromise that works for everyone. Thank you.
Well, I'm remembering having a meeting on the hillside of the project back in 2016 with Eddie Cole, and Margarita, and Marcela, and many other residents of the neighborhood, and just trying to get a sense of what was going on out there and what needed to be done, and I think it's taken a lot of work to try to figure out how to get to a point where we could act on a particular rezoning that will transform the area, but also result in really good new housing for the residents of that neighborhood. I'm also fully aware, as Terry is, that there are other issues associated with this, like the stormwater diversion that could have an adverse effect on Ottawa, and we discussed the stormwater diversion project tonight in our work session. And I know that Kevin Mutson back there has committed his own time and energy to trying to make sure that the project is a really good one from a design point of view, as has Jimmy for the development team. So I just want to praise everybody who's been involved, and especially, not especially, also note the great work our staff has done. I mean, y'all can -- probably don't have any inkling of how much staff, time, and energy has gone into this over the past, what, two and a half, three years? Three and a half years? I don't know. Kind of lose track. But it's been a great amount of effort on the part of the staff, so I want to praise them for the work they've done, and I'm very pleased to be able to vote for this project, for the rezoning. So roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Passed and adopted. All right. So I don't know if any of you who are here just for Forest View want to get up and leave. Please feel free to do that.
You can stay, too.
You know, you've spent two or three years.
He wants to stay here a little longer, don't he?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that Rafael Morata just left the room, but I should have mentioned the Center for Worker Justice as well. They've done a lot of work on this. So we can move to the next item, which is, I'm going to make sure I know what I'm doing here, which is item 10B. Item 10B, capital subdivision, preliminary, and final plat. This is a resolution approving the preliminary and final plats of capital subdivision here in Iowa City, but staff has requested deferral of this item to June 18. Could I have a motion to defer to the 18th of June, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Teague. Seconded by Cole. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Just a voice vote.
Sorry? Oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item 11, hate crime. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Five entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, to add hate crime as a criminal offense. This is first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Eleanor, did you plan to address this initially?
Well, I can certainly give a little overview.
Why don't you give us an overview? Yeah, please.
So you got my memo of May 30 that kind of lays out how this progressed. In early April, I was contacted by three law students who, under the supervision of a law professor, were working on behalf of the Johnson County Interfaith Coalition. They're a Safe Communities Task Force that we're looking at ordinance proposals in light of the increased frequency recently regarding hate incidents. So over the course of two months, Chief Matherley and I met with J. KICK, short for Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, and their attorneys to discuss the fairly numerous issues that are involved in crafting an ordinance like this, and where we -- what we came to was the hate crime ordinance that's in front of you today. Just a couple things to note. Crimes are principally a function of the state code, not the city code. You all know that. Cities only have authority over simple misdemeanors, and the penalty for simple misdemeanors are up to 620.
Motion carries. All right. Item 11, hate crime. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter V entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, to add hate crime as a criminal offense. This is first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by men, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Eleanor, did you plan to address this initially?
Well, I can certainly give a little overview.
Let you give us an overview. Yeah, please.
So you got my memo of May 30th that kind of lays out how this progressed. In early April, I was contacted by three law students who, under the supervision of a law professor, were working on behalf of the Johnson County Interfaith Coalition. They're Safe Communities Task Force, that we're looking at ordinance proposals in light of the increased frequency recently regarding hate incidents. So over the course of two months, Chief Matherley and I met with J. Kick, short for Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, and their attorneys to discuss the fairly numerous issues that are involved in crafting an ordinance like this. And where we, what we came to was the hate crime ordinance that's in front of you today. Just a couple things to note. Crimes are principally a function of the state code, not the city code. You all know that. Cities only have authority over simple misdemeanors, and the penalty for simple misdemeanors are up to $625 and up to 30 days in jail. The state code has a hate crimes statute that provides an enhanced penalty for certain crimes. So for instance, if an assault, a simple assault, which is the lowest level of assault, is committed because of the race, natural, national origin, sex, gender identity, it's actually, gender identity isn't included in the state law, because of those protected characteristics, then the penalty is bumped up to the next level. So a simple misdemeanor becomes a serious misdemeanor, a serious misdemeanor becomes an aggravated misdemeanor, et cetera. Because the state has authority to define and prosecute serious misdemeanors, all types of crimes, where the city only has the simple misdemeanor. So harassment, there's been some discussion in the community about harassment not being an enhanceable penalty under the state code. And I think there's been talk of making efforts at the state level to change that. I know the Johnson County Attorney supports that, and I believe J. Kick is going to be looking at that in the future. So what we ended up here is with a simple misdemeanor hate crime for harassment done because of someone's race or other protected characteristics, or trespass with the intent to harass, and specified a jail penalty for that. Three to seven days for the first offense and 30 days for subsequent offenses. That's an unusual thing for the city to do, as you may recall, while the city has for years just specified for some of our simple misdemeanors. And when I say simple misdemeanors, when you're looking at state or city's simple misdemeanors to date, it's been things like traffic, under-21s, you know, that kind of thing, very. We don't currently specify a jail penalty for most of those, with the exception of, with very few exceptions. I think one of them is indecent exposure, and one of them is actually the ordinance that has been on the books for, since the 1970s, I think, about our nuclear free zone, and as far as I know, has never been prosecuted. So in any event, what the, within the confines of what the city can do, what this ordinance will do is it will identify harassment when done because of a protected characteristic, and those categories are those that we have under our Iowa City Human Rights Ordinance. It will designate that as a hate crime. There's still a harassment crime under the state code, and that can still be prosecuted, but this will be specifically called a hate crime, and it will also specify a particular jail penalty. So that's really kind of what the essence of the ordinance does. In crafting the language of the ordinance, I've attempted to use the language of both the state harassment statute and the state hate crimes statute, because both of those statutes have been considered by the Iowa Supreme Court and found to be constitutional. So essentially, what this prohibits is a defendant communicating with a victim with the intent to intimidate, annoy, threaten, or alarm without a legitimate purpose and because of the victim's race or other protected characteristics. I think it's quite defensible, given the earlier case law of the Supreme Court. And the last thing I note is, the law students did talk, run their proposals by the ACLU. The ACLU had some proposed language that they liked to see included in hate crimes legislation, because as you can imagine, one of the big issues with this is the First Amendment issues and drawing those lines, particularly in this case, because we're talking about communication, pure communication, not assault, not criminal mischief writing on a building, but communication. So those lines are difficult to draw. I talked to the ACLU and asked if they could direct me to any hate crimes legislation that included that language. They directed me to the federal legislation, which, as I noted in my memo, included language, which I found to be much better in terms of not interfering with our ability to prosecute this offense. And one more note, I think it's really important to make sure that people understand what this ordinance will prohibit and what it won't prohibit, given, and what it can't prohibit given the First Amendment. And we've had conversations during our discussions about those, and I feel confident that J. Kick understands those distinctions. But for example, the example that I gave in the memo was, assuming the investigation bears out the charge, putting a note, a hate that expresses hate because of race on an African-American person's door, for instance, is something that would be prosecuted under this ordinance. Stickers placed downtown that say, you know, it's okay to be white, or leafleting of a neighborhood with that kind of speech is not going to be prosecuted under this ordinance. I think we've had discussions during, with J. Kick about how, and the city is, does keep track of hate incidents, not necessarily hate crimes, and the city has, is, does investigate those, those hate incidents, but not all of them will be hate crimes.
Great. Thank you, honor. Would anybody in the audience like to address this proposed ordinance? I thought you might come back to it.
You go. No, you go, you go. Pastor Anthony Smith, I'll use my church address, if that's okay. 2929 East Court Street, Iowa City, Iowa. First of all, I just want to say thank you for the collaborative effort that I've had with the council, the police chief, city managers, the Black Voices Project, the University of Iowa Law School, the Anti-Defamation League, the ACLU, and the NAACP. If I've forgotten anybody else, I am so sorry. But it was, getting this far was a community, it was a community effort. And I want the council to make sure that you understand that this was a community effort. J. Kick may have led it, but it was a total community effort. We also did surveys. I'm not sure if you know the results of the surveys, but we found out that through the surveys, we've seen that there was, one in five people have been, have experienced a hate crime but have not reported it. One in five people of color. And so it is, so what we've seen from the FBI's reports doesn't tell the whole story. We think, and I'm not discrediting the FBI by no means, but what I am saying is, is that there are a lot of, there is a lot of unreported incidents of hate in our community. And now that we've identified these things, this is a good step forward. I think we can all agree that it is not, it is not everything that we want. And because of protect speech, our First Amendment, we understand that we can't get it the way we want it. But we can do, but I believe that we've put together something that is, that is a good first step. And the most important thing is, is keeping our community safe. And so I am, I'm glad that we were able to collaborate and that we continue to collaborate on making our community safe. There are some things that I'm still, that I still have, that I would like to see come forth, that may not come forth out of this ordinance. And number one is training, because this ordinance is a, has to do with harassment and as a hate crime. I believe that there needs to be some training that should be tailored to it. It doesn't have to happen in the ordinance, and I think we've explained it, but we would like to see that happen. Also, the Iowa City PD does collect data, but we want to make sure that that data is readily available to the public so that we can see and monitor those who are being charged with a hate crime. Other than that, I just want to thank you, thank you all for all of your participation, and we're looking forward to seeing this getting passed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pastor Smith. Anyone else saying good evening?
Hello and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Eid Mubarak. Like Pastor Smith already said, this ordinance, we put a lot of time in it, especially those who are in the task force. We spend a lot of time going over it, studying it, and consultation with other civil rights groups, like Pastor Smith mentioned. And we did the best we can, and as you are aware of, we worked with the law students to take us through the legalities of the ordinance. So we put in a lot of effort and time and studies to it, and we came up with the best we could. And we thank you all for listening to it and looking into it. And some of you, we met with individually, and we presented you these ordinance, because we want you to get familiar with it and study deeply and understand what our efforts were. We know and appreciate that in this country, the United States of America, we have freedom of speech, freedom of expression. Yeah, we can say whatever we want, as long as we're not hurting the other person. Our freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and all the freedom we have, as long as we're not infringing on the other person's freedom, we are okay. But as long as we cross that line and infringe it on the other person's freedom, then our freedom limits there. The limits of our freedom stop at where not to hurt the other person, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion. So we understand that, and we consider all this while we were drafting this ordinance. And again, like Pastor Smith already said, we really appreciate that, looking into it, considering it, and doing the best you can to give us, not us as J. Kick, but the whole Iowa City community, the whole Johnson County community. Because we want to make our city, like you always have been doing, the best city in terms of people's freedom. We want people to come here. I always tell people, my community, one of the biggest problems I have is, my community keep growing exponentially. Today at Eid, people told me, oh, where are all these people coming from? I say, hey, I keep telling you, we are growing, because people love to come to Iowa City, for whatever reason. You know, that's a great comment for you, great commitment that you are doing to make the city a better city. And we think that this ordinance will even add to that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, chief. I thought I saw you standing over there.
Good evening. Jody Matherley, police chief. I just want to show my appreciation for Eleanor for all her time she put into crafting this, and really J. Kick and the School of Law at the university for taking that grassroots effort to put this together. We had discussions a year ago about the need for the state level, the Iowa code, to update, to be a little more expansive and inclusive and more, or less counterintuitive on these crimes. It's very limited on charging hate crimes, and it doesn't make sense that someone can do criminal mischief to your property and be charged a hate crime, but if they threaten you by communication, that we couldn't charge that. So the harassment charge just makes sense, and it needs to be done at the state level to really shed light on the persons that do things simply because somebody looks different than them or believes something different than them. And this just doesn't affect the victims, this affects our entire community. So the police department stands behind this. We're glad that this is going in our toolbox, so we can use it if and when needed. And we take these crimes serious, we document them well, and we will certainly keep moving forward to do all we can to stamp out hate. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Thanks for your work, too. Anyone else? Sam?
Sam Massey, First Presbyterian Church, 2701 Rochester Avenue, I think. So I want to thank all the folks from different organizations and various faith communities from coming out this evening. That's awesome. Thank you very much for being here. And then I also want to give my thanks to our city attorney, to our folks here sitting in the council who showed up, who we elected to represent us, for their hard work, for our chief of police, for all of y'all's input. What you offered was gold, and you sharpened our work, and we are very grateful for that. You wrestled with us, came alongside of us when it came to the words that we wanted to use that would affirm for one more time that our city is truly committed to be a safe place for all of our residents. Due to the contributions of so many, we have been able to set before you an option for what we believe to be responsible justice. The ordinance that you are looking at this evening calls forth from our citizens the essential integrity that makes them worthy of our state seal and our state motto, which you know very well. Our liberties we prize and our rights we will maintain. The reason we live peaceably in a democracy is because we honor the tension between these core values. We elect people to help us to live responsibly between these core values. In particular, we want the free exercise of people's liberties. We also do not want that free exercise to trample on the rights of other persons, especially those who are the most vulnerable in our culture. This ordinance has a lot of details to it, and I'm glad for those who can keep track of details. But for me, it symbolizes an articulation of our conviction that decent people cannot tolerate actions and crimes in particular committed against others out of some sort of bigotry. We go as far as we can to encourage other types of behavior. In my faith tradition, what a person feels or a person thinks is not unimportant, but in the end, it is immaterial. What counts are the motivations that we materialize in our deeds. This ordinance is connected to a variety of faith traditions and sacred books. And yet, I think most importantly for tonight, it emerges from the conviction held deeply in our republic as to what it means to be a human being and what it means to have respect. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate all of you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Patton. I live at One Oak Knoll Court. I moved to Iowa City going on 60 years ago, come to school here, and thought it was a pretty nice place. Sunday at church, we were shown a list of the hate crimes in Iowa City in the last few years, and I had no idea that it was this bad in Iowa City. I'm a straight, white Christian of many... I'm a straight white Christian of many generations U.S. citizens, so I tend to overlook this stuff. This is really needed, and I'm glad you all are considering it, and I hope you will vote it in. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
My name is Edward Allgood. That's with two Ls. My mother's been gone 10 years, but she always said the second L is really important. This opportunity, I didn't plan to say anything, fell on my lap. The police chief is here. Someone that is very important to me, who is now 49 years old, developed a mental illness when he was 23 years old here in Iowa City. And when you think you've seen awful, haven't seen awful unless you have a mentally ill son, I want you all to know, and you, that the Iowa City Police Department, sometimes at my request, sometimes because they found him, picked him up many a time, and took him to the hospital. The guy I'm talking about is six foot two, weighs 250, and he showed up at our house at 2:00 in the morning in the back of a squad car, not handcuffed, not restrained in any way. The police knocked on our door to talk to us, and they took him to the hospital. On one time, when he was in the hospital, we were out on pass, and two police officers walked into whatever restaurant we were in for a little while and started to talk to him and ask him how he was doing. This is... I'm trying to say, I've been trying to figure out how to tell the Police Department how grateful I have been for this person. I can't move on.
I understand. Thank you for speaking.
Good evening. My name is Quinn Johnson. I want to speak on the hate crime and this director towards the chief and the police officers. I've been down here for six years, and every year, I didn't spend time getting harassed, and I didn't been to jail 10 times for this harassment and stuff. My first time ever getting locked up down here was for like an OWI. And I don't drink, you know, and they made me blow, take a breath for laser tests on the scene, then the police station, then at the hospital, three times. And then, if I didn't get in my urine, they told me they were going to suspend my license. Then I gave them that, and they said the cut was faulty. Then I gave another test again, passed that test. Then they gave me sobriety test twice, passed that. They still locked me up. I still had to bond out for that. Still had to fight that case. Fought it for six months until they dismissed it, you know what I'm saying? I've been harassed every year since I've been down here. They just broke my foot last year. Two years ago, they jumped me on Taylor Street. So they say I'll be coming in the police station mad, but I'm getting harassed, getting beat up on, you know? There's only so much that I'm going to be able to take, period, as a human being. I'm not going to keep putting, people put their hands on me at all. You don't want me to have a gun to protect myself. I'm a victim of being shot. You know, I've been through a lot, and that needed, you know what I'm saying, go towards the police officers, too, you know what I'm saying, the hate crime, because I've been harassed six years straight. That's all I wanted to speak on.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else?
I just think that this is really good because it's just for the safety of our community. Johnson County has, is a, to me, this community is tight-knit. When it comes to social justice and racial equity, the community always come together and pull together. When we see hate crime has been committed, whether it's to a Hispanic person, an African American, a Sudanese person, whoever, we stand up. But I just want people to know that this ordinance is for everyone. This ordinance, it doesn't matter who you are. There was a time where we had a young black man going to the University of Iowa who said three white guys jumped him after the bar. The whole town was all upset, and we was like, "Oh, this can't be happening." We all got together, people came together, the university brought out the community. Everybody came forth. And then when we found out, the black boy had lied on these three white guys. So it does, there is no color on this. I'm just standing here stating that this ordinance is for everyone. Everyone needs to know that if you're going to use harassment and bullying in any kind of way against anybody, any person, this is for all people, and I'm glad to see it this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Royce Ann.
Hi, how are you? My name's Shawn Williams. I've been here...
Please speak into the mic.
My name is Shawn Williams. I've been here in Iowa 17 years with my kids. I have eight kids. And I'm glad that you all will pass this law because me and my family have been harassed. I had, all my neighbors in my neighborhood, they all have pets, and we got a pet a couple of months ago, and the pet was out in the yard, our dog was out in the yard barking. And so the police came to my house and said to me that, "Your dog is, we heard your dog was out in the yard barking." And I'm like, "Okay, the whole neighborhood got dogs. So why would y'all pick me and my family to say that the dog was barking and that? We would have to get a ticket or something or keep the dog in the house because the dog can't be barking." So we had to get rid of our pet a couple of months ago. So I'm glad that this law is being passed because we have been harassed.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else, so we have a motion on the floor. Council discussion?
I just want to say thank you to all the organizations that have, and individuals who've come together to work on this. I think when you look at something that is this complicated, you know, from getting language from the ACLU and getting other federal language that maybe works better, that we have a better chance of defending if somebody were to try and say this is unconstitutional, to get all those resources and all the local people together, I think that's when you can end up with the best solution. May not be the perfect solution, I agree with that, but it may be the best solution that we can get at this point in time. And again, it may just be the first step as we move through these things. So I just want to express that appreciation to all the people who, you know, have taken a lot of time to work on this and help craft this, from staff members to all the community members. The other comment I would just make is, I think it's really important, and I know when city attorney Eleanor Dilks mentioned it, that members of J.C.A.C. have the understanding, the general public may not, the difference between a hate incident and a hate crime. And so I think it behooves all of us to try and continue to educate people on, you know, what that difference is. And just because we pass this ordinance, it's, unfortunately, it's not going to solve all the problems, it's going to give us another tool to use, and I'm sure there will be times that people will be disappointed because they feel like appropriate charges are not made under this ordinance. And I think we're going to have to understand that and be patient and listen to the explanations of whether it's our Police Department or, you know, the county attorney or city attorney or whoever's involved. But I just want to thank everybody for their involvement and hard work on providing this good step for the community.
I want to say thanks to J.C.A.C. as well for even thinking of bringing this to council and leading the way with so many organizations and people within the community. I'm pretty impressed. Not only do they, although I almost gave an amen to both the pastors that spoke today. Great orators are you all. But again, I think everybody that came and spoke today, I really appreciate the courage that you mustered up to get in front of us and to share your personal stories with us. I really appreciate it. I'm going to support this ordinance because I do believe that we've seen here recently some hate crimes that has been made public. But we also heard that through a survey that was done through J.C.A.C., that there was 1 in 5 people that, you know, stated that they experienced a hate crime. And, you know, again, this is for all people within our community. And so it's not just, you know, if someone is doing it against an African American or Sudanese, it's, you know, if they're doing it to someone else. And so I do think that that's going to be critical, as Councilor Mims just stated, to get the education out to the community so that they do understand what does this mean, you know, this ordinance when we're doing a simple misdemeanor. I think that's going to be important. So press citizen and all the others that want to, you know, maybe report something, what I would suggest is maybe getting out and giving some examples to the community of what this means. And I think, you know, either, I think, give some examples of what does it mean for someone to be convicted of this. And again, I think training for our police, and they've done really well, the Police Department has been going through lots of training here recently, and I'm blanking on the names because I get my acronyms.
CIT?
CIT, yes. So they've been doing CIT training, and I have been a part of that. And I've even seen a difference within the Police Department, interactions within the past three years since CIT training has been implemented. Actually, this Friday, was it Friday? Saturday? Saturday, I saw an interaction with a police officer downtown, and I was just standing on the periphery, and I just saw all their interactions happening with the police officer and this guy in the community. And at the end of that, I went up to that police officer because the one thing that I saw, he could have, the police officer had a reason to get loud and maybe even a little authoritative, but he kept it here in his volume. I couldn't even hear what he was saying. But after, I went up to him and I said, "You know, I don't know what your conversation was, but I can tell you this. You could have went either way with what you did, but I was very impressed with your demeanor and how you presented yourself." And so I do believe that our police, even though they're going through the CIT training, and there's been huge progress towards just a change in how the police address the public. I do believe that this training, just on what this ordinance mean and examples of what it means when they're going to attend something, there needs to be training there so that they just understand what this means because it can be a little confusing and a little gray. So thanks again for everybody that got up and spoke, and will be supportive of this ordinance.
Anyone else?
I'm also very supportive of this ordinance. Our strategic plan talks about fostering an inclusive community, and I think this is going to be a major part of that. And thank you to those who, Royce Ann in particular, mentioned that it's for people of all color, all races, all identities. And also stress, we talked about a development project earlier that was a collaborative effort. This has been truly an example of collaborative effort. People from all different realms of the community working together that you wouldn't have thought worked together before even knew existed, and that's great to see that. And I think it would be a great way for even our Police Department to more effectively investigate these kinds of incidents and evoke appropriate punishment. So I think it's a great thing.
So I think a lot of times when we talk about our home rule authorities, we always talk about what our limitations are. But I think it's easy to forget that although our powers are limited, our ability to express our values is unlimited, and we have the full ability to be able to do that. And I think that's really what this ordinance does. And in particular, one of our most cherished values is the right to be secure in our homes. You have a right to, in your dwellings, to not be subjected to unwanted targeted speech directed at your race, your national origin, your gender identity. That's what this is about. Will it solve every problem? It probably won't, but we will never give up. We will always work. And, you know, I think of, Royce Ann's going to be going down to the Freedom Trail here shortly, and, you know, Dr. Martin Luther King talks about the promissory note that has never been cashed. And I think we all feel that it's more than a promissory note, it's like a mortgage that we can never pay off. But that doesn't mean that we won't do everything we possibly can to target hate where it emerges. It has emerged in this community in a very visible way, and that this expresses that that will not be tolerated. And finally, as Pauline had talked about, collaborative democracy. This represents collaboration between your elected leaders and the residents. That is the best way to get things done, and in particular, to work with leaders or staff. And the product of that is hopefully an ordinance that we're hopeful that not only will we adopt, but every city in the state of Iowa will adopt. And that would be the goal as well, that they would imitate this and utilize us as a resource, so as a state, we indicate that this sort of conduct will never be tolerated.
Well, I know a couple of months ago, when I met with the Johnson County Interfaith Coalition and was asked, you know, what my personal experience was with this notion of safety in the community, which really is foundational to the sense of belonging within a community. And they went on to explain how, you know, 1 in 5 in their data collection had experienced hate crimes. I was shocked that this was being experienced by residents in my hometown. So it was, I think, for all of us, a very educational experience in that sense, that this needs to be known. I certainly support the ordinance as a necessary step, which in a sense, that data had revealed, that this is the scope of the issue that we're dealing with. And I also think the response to that was Iowa City at its best, you know, this coalition of interests and skills that came together to craft the ordinance. So I, too, just really want to thank everyone involved. I do believe, while we, I think it's clear there is a need for this ordinance, I really feel that fundamentally, this is a question of common culture, you know, that, or perhaps what might be called common law, that we need to be more mindful of how we relate to one another, more respectful. Yes, we need the ordinance, but fundamentally, I think what's critical is that we be more mindful in our relationships with one another. But I'm very supportive of the ordinance. Thanks for everyone's work.
So it's hard for me to add anything to what's already been said, but I will contribute a few words. Like John did, you met with members of J.C.A.C. a couple of months ago. So back on March 28, New Creations Church, I met with Pastor Anthony Smith, Hussein, Sam Massey, Charlie Eastham, two all students and others affiliated with J.C.A.C. And the basic question I heard, I'll condense it, was, "Will you support a hate crimes ordinance?" That was the question to me. And at the time, I can recall saying basically, "Well, the first question is, is it consistent with my values and with the values that I think our council holds?" The answer to that is yes, I said then. Is it legal? I don't know. You got to talk to the city attorney. Is it enforceable? I don't know. You got to talk to the police chief, and so on. And they did. So you've really pulled things together brilliantly, and I have nothing but praise for all of your efforts to do that. And as a result, I'm really very, very pleased to be able to support this ordinance. Okay, so anybody else need to say anything? Hearing nothing. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0. And just to remind everybody, that's first consideration. We got to do two more. Okay, we can move to item 12. I don't know if the rest of you want to hang around for item 12 and so on. Thank you for coming and showing your support.
Thank you.
Well done.
Two more times.
I might have to slip out after we get this going. This is item 12.
Ed Allgood, I don't know if you remember me, quite a while. Nice to meet you.
Sure. Uh huh. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to item 12, Support for Developing Local Food Hub. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Field to Family for payment of up to $45,000 towards the development of a local food hub. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Thomas, seconded by Teague. Would anybody like to address this topic, like maybe Ashley?
I'm going to start. I'll just give a quick summary, and then we'll hear from a presentation from Field to Family about the proposed food hub. So the city sustainability coordinator identified local agencies that are actively supporting our local foods economy, and this is in connection to the city council's strategic plan goal, growing the local food economy. So staff ended up contacting six agencies, asking them to write a letter of interest with a proposed project and the amount of funding that would be required to enact those projects. So two agencies either didn't respond or did not have the time this year, they felt it wasn't appropriate to respond, but four provided proposals. And the request from Field to Family was determined by a group of staff to have the most promise to provide the greatest impact for our residents. It was a project that was proposed as ready to go. It had just received substantive financial support from Johnson County, and it would get to this initial supply and access of local foods through organization, through massing the amount of food collected from local farmers. And it's an opportunity to serve many people. So it was an exciting opportunity to continue to work and talk with Field to Family about what this could turn into. So the amount, that $45,000, was determined based upon some of the hard costs that would help them start operations. So by looking at things like a refrigeration truck, allowing them to access additional cold storage, which they don't necessarily have access to without additional funding, support of a digital platform to allow people to know how to get connected to this effort, as well as what the operations are for this organization and what it's doing for our local community. So I'll touch just briefly on the other projects that were submitted. I'm sure there's interest in what those might have been. They were asked to also apply for the climate action grants. A couple of them were smaller dollar amount or projects that we would find fit in very well with the climate plans objectives to support local foods as well. And so several of them applied and were received well by the evaluation committee and awarded funding. So you should be getting information about the climate action grants awarded within the next info packet or the following. So I can explain a little bit more, or we can let Field to Family explain exactly what the food hub is, what the need for a local food hub, and how they propose to serve our area. So I loaded it up for you, and Michelle Kenyon is able to-
Hi, Michelle. How are you doing?
Hi. Thank you so much for having us. Again, my name is Michelle Kenyon. I'm director of Field to Family. This is Gisele Breskowitz, our food hub manager. I just want to say that this whole process has been amazing. We have been around for a while, Field to Family, working to create a more community-based food system in our area. We understand that a community-based food system has many benefits to a community. We're talking about enhancing our environment, our health, and our economy. And so when Brenda and Ashley and Jeff came and approached us, asking, "Hey, will you write a letter about how your work will help build our local food economy?", we were completely thrilled. We've been working with the Johnson County Board of Supervisors for a couple of years now to really research the market efficiencies and the need in the marketplace for this. And ultimately, as an organization that's been working on education and collaboration, this was a new frontier for us. But when it came back to us, that the market research and all the different groups that were working collaboration on this came back and said, "A wholesale local food hub is what we need", we were ready to fill that gap. Again, our work really is primarily about building a community-based food system. When we talk about climate change, we're right there, working to mitigate that, increase our environmental health and conserve natural resources. There's many reasons why we support local food-based systems. And the way we've done that in the past few years is to help reduce food insecurity through providing recently harvested fresh foods at all the different stops at the mobile food pantry throughout Johnson County. So there's 13 stops per month that were out June through October, where we provide fresh, harvested foods, a little bit of information on how to prepare those foods, and also some food samples and youth food system education as well in those stops. We purchase from farmers, and we also get some donations. And then we really work to promote local foods and farmers, where you can find your food, where you can get it more locally. And so we have a program that we've worked to develop with a lot of different collaborators to boost promotion and magnify locally grown foods at the place where you purchase foods or where you get your foods, and increase the amount of seasonally grown local foods on menus. So we're about to debut an online searchable intuitive database that even I can handle. You just type in one word of what you're looking for, and it will come up of which farmers in this region are handling that and where you can find it. We're really excited that will come out later this month. But in general, we, it's not moving forward. Oh, wait. No, it skipped something. But we also have a farm-to-school program, which the slide's missing on that, I think. But generally, our farm-to-school program works to educate youth in schools about where their food comes from. We support school gardens. We support in-school education, where we bring the farm to the school through farmer fairs. We've done about 15 of those in the last, since we began. We've also sourced locally grown foods for the school lunch menu. And that's the slide I'm missing. But it's about 73,000 pounds of locally grown foods that we've been able to source for the school district. And it took us a few years to figure it out. The school district feeds, when we first started, about 6,000 children. Now they're feeding about 8,400. They have six different production kitchens, and each production kitchen has a specific order, and they all need to come from one source. So we have struggled to meet the demand for locally grown foods, to meet that order, because they're so high. So a food hub ultimately works to aggregate locally grown food so that we can meet that higher demand. And I know I'm moving around a bit here, but just to tell you a little bit about what a food hub is, if you know one food hub, you know one food hub. And this one really focuses on wholesale aggregation, distribution, and promotion of locally grown foods. USDA defines it as a centrally located facility with a structure that procures from numerous sources to meet the wholesale orders. There's many ways to meet those demands and different ways to meet customer orders. But ultimately, after many planning and work with, as a collaboration, this whole project is a work in progress with many community members, including the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, the Food Policy Council. Iowa City Area Development Group has been a great partner, table to table. But ultimately, this, we found through the research and through looking at our own values as an organization, that the only way we can succeed is through a collaborative effort, a nonprofit mission vision model that recognizes the need for education and promotion, of course, of local food and farmers, but ultimately supports a shared vision to support a community-based food system that enhances our economic, environmental, and community health. And of course, there's many benefits that a community-based food system can foster. Ultimately, like I said, I mean, I have been an active citizen in many ways personally. I've paid a little bit of attention to the work that you're doing, and I just admire the way that you're taking complex problems and working to find creative solutions through collaborative processes. And this is really something that I think you can add to your mantle of successes. Again, I was so thrilled to get this invitation to write this letter because ultimately, where our food comes from, who grows it, how it supports our economy and our environment, really is a collaborative and community benefit, or not. And you're choosing to make it a benefit, and we really appreciate that. But we're adding, like I said, we have a lot of support. We have some USDA funding, a local food promotion program, that allows us to work with other food hubs in the state, and also to continue to do resources and to build our resources. But ultimately, we're just adding you to our list. We're so very thankful. And ultimately, this is the beginning of a partnership. We're just getting started. And like I said, we hired Gisele Breskowitz about a year ago, and I just wanted her to share a little bit about what she's been doing to make our dreams and plans and research and strategy as a reality. Gisele?
Thank you. So, yeah, so I joined, I rejoined the University of Iowa and Iowa City communities. I went to undergraduate school here. I spent some time in Pella as a sustainability coordinator and got to do a lot of local food work there. And one thing that I saw was that the college there was, made a real investment in local food. And so when I started there, they were sourcing about 0.02% local food, and then two years later, they were sourcing 17% local food. And they had a fearless leader in there as the head of their dining staff, and brought farmers in and had them engage with students there. And it really inspired me to see what institutions could do in purchasing local food if they have a commitment to it. And so that inspired me to join Field to Family, this nonprofit mission that I believe deeply in. If you're passionate about food and you can see people doing good work in the community through farm-to-school, through these farm stand programs, and then really excitedly kind of launching this food hub to be able to bring those programs together and pair this infrastructural piece for local food with all of the good education and outreach work that was already happening through Field to Family and community partners here in Iowa City and Johnson County, and really the whole South Central Region. But we're talking about Iowa City tonight. So we all eat food. We get it a number of different ways. People who find local food find it sometimes in the grocery store, sometimes in restaurants. You can go to the farmer's market. You can buy a CSA box and some of those more direct-to-consumer models. Our food hub is directly modeled around institutional sales. So whereas one farmer might have a relationship with our family and we can meet them at farmer's market, or we might be able to invest in a CSA to support their small business, they might not have the capacity to, for instance, what we learned through the farm-to-school program, supply enough sweet potatoes to feed 8,000 students, or enough cherry tomatoes to feed an entire district of kids. That same reality exists for lots of institutions in our community. These places that are really the great equalizer in our food system because they provide thousands of meals to people every single day, whether that's in K-12 schools, whether that's in colleges and universities, retirement communities, hospitals, places where people who may not be as fortunate as me to love and shop at their co-op every day will still be able to have access to fresh, nutrient-rich food that is grown by people who are taking care of our community. So in order to do that, we started a food hub last year. We called it a soft launch. So with our table-to-table partners, we shared warehouse space with them. They've been gracious enough to allow us to use their refrigerated fleet. We purchased a small refrigerated trailer that we use as our cold storage infrastructure currently. It's a CoolBot, so it's kind of a retrofitted AC unit. You can fit two pallets of food in there, but really not enough in order to meet the demand that we have identified and that we've been able to see through institutional customers in our region. So we need to grow our infrastructure along with having refrigerated cold storage, which is really important for people in terms of food safety. We've been able to streamline other processes as well. We have consistent invoicing and labeling. We have developed an online order management system in order to make sure we can aggregate product from 20 different farmers in order to bring it in, store it, and then transport it to our customers. So like I said, we've developed this infrastructure. We're still working on these educational pieces and kind of helping both ends of people who are working so hard through this cold rainy growing season to grow food for our community and then connect them to the people who want to buy it and skillfully prepare that in their cafeterias and kitchens for people who eat every day. And so integrity is super important to us. There's a lot of greenwashing out there, a lot of people who say they're doing local, but we've visited and have relationships with every single farmer that we source from. It truly is certified local. We have the selfies to prove it. So we want to continue to support the folks that are working really hard to grow food for our community. And we want to grow thoughtfully, so we know we're not going to do a million dollars in sales next year. But there was a food hub in Iowa that was doing that, so we know that it's feasible. And we want to continue to grow. Right now, we have that soft launch, and we see that there's the capacity from local growers to meet the demand. We hear the demand from our customers. If only we could reduce some of the barriers for them to get it. So any support that the city of Iowa City can provide to help us reach that goal, we know it's possible, and we're going to continue to grow really thoughtfully. We're really excited. Sent out our first price list of the season this week, so we are getting into that full launch stage. And yeah, we're ready to build it out. So we believe everybody deserves access to local food. We think the food hub can really help provide that. I think it can help our farmers get more access into new markets in our community, and it can help more people in our community get access to local food.
So again, we want to thank you for considering this. Like again, we, like Gisele said, we're growing intentionally. We're using what's already in place, partnerships and collaborations that are in place, to grow intentionally. We're providing a service. And at the end of that, with our other programs, we're able to provide extra education, the value of eating more fruits and vegetables. Unfortunately, Iowa citizens aren't on the top of the scale when it comes to the amount of fruits and vegetables they get every day. We're hoping to improve that statistic. But ultimately, the demand is out there. We have farmers that are growing great food, and they're really good at it. Here we are, providing this other service to ensure that that food is more available to more people. Do you have any questions for us?
Great. Thank you, Michelle and Gisele. So does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. And I'd asked in the work session, this has been a great presentation because in reading the thing, our memo and stuff, I didn't really have a full concept of what you're doing. So this has been very helpful. You've talked about institutions and schools. How does that work for you when you look at Iowa and you look at our weather and you look, for example, at our school schedule? You know, the schools are just getting out. Through certain programs, there's some summer meal plans and stuff that are available. But basically, our K-12 are out. At the time, and the university-
Great. Thank you, Michelle and Gisele. So does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. And I'd asked in the work session, this has been a great presentation because in reading the thing, our memo and stuff, I didn't really have a full concept of what you're doing. So this has been very helpful. You've talked about institutions and schools. How does that work for you when you look at Iowa and you look at our weather and you look, for example, at our school schedule? You know, the schools are just getting out. Through certain programs, there's some summer meal plans and stuff that are available. But basically, our K-12 are out. At the time, and the university doesn't have as many students here during the summer, at the exact time that our farmers are producing the most fresh food. So where are you, where are your customers, I guess, when those big institutions don't have that demand, which maybe is fine for you as you're getting started as well?
Well, we've had a lot of experience with Farm to School. So we've had a lot of experience sourcing for the school lunch menu. Luckily, I mean, they're in session the last week of August through September through on, and that's really the best time, the biggest bounty we have. So, and it can go on. In the past, it's gone on past December. We've been able to source in January. Yes. Growing season is an issue. Choose local while in season is one of our mottos. And it's true. There's a lot of locally grown food that's available during the season. Outside of the season, we're looking at diversifying and focusing a little bit more on local dairy, local meat as well. But right now, we do have a lot of locally grown foods available through, like I said, early January. And then we also have innovative farmers that we're working with who are utilizing a season extensions and hoop houses and all that. But I will say that harvest dinners are in September, and that is really a time to celebrate our bounty. So while we do have those challenges, to us, it's an opportunity.
Right.
Because when it is in season, that's the best time. That is the best time to taste it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And that's a, that's a good question. And you mentioned the hot houses. So you would consider some of the farmers that maybe would have greenhouses or do hydroponic gardening kinds of things growing?
Yeah. I mean, I was just thinking of, to that question, an example of a farmer who's growing tomatoes for the district has for several years, and he's like, well, I put, I put these in, they do succession planting, and they utilize both outdoor and under greenhouse storage to extend the growing season, as Michelle said. But it's like, well, I put these in for you guys. You know, I put these in late for you guys. And so a lot of it just gets into, and I don't want to get into the weeds too much.
Sure.
That's one weed.
I get it.
But it's just planning.
Sure.
And trying to do that collaboratively with people, as Michelle's been doing for 10 years now with the school districts, and getting them to put the right things on the menu when it's possible. So.
Good. Okay. Thanks.
Other comments from anybody? So who are your institutional customers again?
Well, like I said earlier, we were, I've been a member, and we've worked very collaboratively with the Johnson County Food Policy Council. They have a commission that really works to research and provide recommendations to the county. They have attracted a lot of very interesting players in the community who are interested in food. One of those players happens to be very involved in the dining and catering department at the University of Iowa. And they, ever since we, we connected with them, they've been at the table. They're part of our advisory board. So for instance, that's one of them. Also, there are several nursing homes that work with farmers or that want to expand their sourcing for local. And so we're working with them. In general, you know, we're looking at the region. We work with a lot of different farmers that are in Johnson County and right on the edge. Most of the farmers that we work with do come to Iowa City, either at the farmer's market, or they have customers here in Iowa City. And so we've been able to work with them to really talk about what markets aren't you able to meet? Where's the demand? You know, they, they grow good crops. They don't necessarily grow enough to meet the demand. And so they've been also very helpful. So we're, like I said, this is a collaborative process, working with the growers as well as the institutions who are interested in growing with us.
And briefly, you're also working with some low-income food providers too, aren't you? I mean, you're doing some direct?
We are with our farm stand program, and we're trying to bridge the gap as well to let them know of this new service that's available. But again, we're new. We're going to reach out to a lot of different types of institutions that serve lots of people. So this is, we're not, like Gisele said, we're not going to explode overnight, you know. We're not going to have locally grown tomatoes available when in season everywhere you go, but more. So, and that's the point. And we want to expand the access. Does that help, Don?
Any other comments from anybody?
Just another point. We're kind of open. You know, if anyone's interested and who serves lots of people, we would love to work with you.
And Pauline, I didn't mean to skip over your question. There are some hydroponic, mostly microgreens in the region right now. We had to go an hour and a half to get some lettuces that were hydroponic. And if you know anybody, let us know.
Okay, thanks. Excellent presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm not hearing any other discussion from council members. Okay, so roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. All right, item 13, approval of the fiscal year 20 CDBG home budget. This is a resolution adopting Iowa City's fiscal year 20 annual action plan, which is a subpart of Iowa City's 2016 to 2020 consolidated plan, otherwise known as city steps. So I have in front of me a note from staff. I'm going to read it. It says, "The appendix attached to the resolution is the fiscal year 20 annual action plan activities as approved by the Housing and Community Development Commission. Counsel at the May 21 work session indicated that the home set aside for homeowner rehabilitation should also include rehabilitation of rental single-family and duplex properties in targeted neighborhoods for the homeowner rehab program." So there's an amended resolution in the June 4 late handouts. So I need a motion to approve the amended resolution to provide that home homeowner rehab funds can be used for single-family and duplex rentals in targeted neighborhoods.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms., second by Cole. Discussion.
Are you addressing this? Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. So the annual action plan is a HUD-required document that outlines how the city will spend CDBG and home entitlement funds throughout the upcoming fiscal year. The action plan is also a subpart of city steps, which is the five-year consolidated plan. Much of the action plan reviews the goals and priorities set in the consolidated plan and describes how the funding for this year will address those goals and priorities. This is actually the fifth year of our consolidated plan, so we're working with a consultant right now and through the next several months to come up with our new plan for FY '21 through FY '25. Up on the screen, I have the FY '20 HUD allocations for CDBG and home. Funds have remained level from FY '19 for CDBG, but we've had a 17% decrease from, in home funds from FY '19. So this chart shows the CDBG and home funding for Iowa City from 1995 through 2020. CDBG is shown in the blue. Our peak funding came in 1996 with over $1 million just in CDBG funding, and our lowest funding level was in 2018 with $567,000. Home is shown in the orange above the CDBG. Our home funding peaked in 2004 with about $716,000, and our lowest funding level was in 2016 with $321,000. And you can also see in that gray line on the bottom, that's our admin levels. And this is the same information adjusted for inflation, so you can really see the downward trend in federal funding in this one. And this table outlines the project allocations for FY '20. We can use up to 15% of our CDBG funds for public services, so that's aid to agencies. And then we pair that with local funds. So the first three projects are, were allocated through aid to agencies. Next is public facility projects, which include DVIP and old brick. Neighborhood improvements is a $75,000 set aside where we work with Parks and Rec to identify a project in a low-income area of the community. This year, I believe we're working on a project, it'll be in Wetherby and possibly one in Fair Meadows as well. The next set aside is for housing rehab. As you mentioned before, this has, this has historically been owner occupied rehab, but at the May 21 council work session, council directed staff to allow rental rehab for single-family and duplex properties with the home rehab funds. So staff is recommending with the adoption of the action plan that we include this, so we can begin implementing it in FY '20. And then moving on to other housing activities, they include rental new construction, rehab and acquisition, home buyer assistance, as well as our CHODO funds to the Housing Fellowship. We have $50,000 in economic development set aside, which we use for small business assistance. And then we have our admin and planning costs, which are limited to 20% of the CDBG and 10% of the home funds. And you'll notice that the totals are a little bit higher than our annual allocation, and that's due to program income and any unallocated funds we've had from previous years. And so our next steps for this, the action plan is due to HUD on June 11, and then we'll complete our environmental reviews and execute agreements and start the projects.
Great. Thanks, Erica. Any questions for Erica? I don't hear any questions. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, council discussion?
I'm just glad somebody else does all this detailed work.
Yeah. Don't you know. Thank you for your, for your efforts.
Glad you understand it, Erica. Lot of details there.
Okay, that's enough discussion. Are we kidding? If anybody else wants to speak, please do. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 14, fiscal year 20 emerging aid, sorry, emerging aid to agencies. Probably really means aid to emerging agencies, doesn't it? Anyhow, resolution allocating human services emerging aid to agencies funding for the fiscal year 2020, July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Could have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Is anybody going to address this, or are we just going to, oh, Erica, go ahead.
So last summer, HCDC reviewed the aid to agency allocation process and set aside about 5% of the funding allocation for what we named emergent agencies. This was defined as agencies that have not existed as a legal entity for at least two years or have not received aid to agency funding in the past five years. So any organization that doesn't qualify for the regular legacy pool of aid to agencies would fall into this category as well. The minimum funding amount was $5,000. We received six applications for a total request of $78,970 and had set aside $19,000 for this, for the emergent, emerging funds. HCDC selected Center for Worker Justice, Grow Johnson County, and Successful Living as the emerging agency recipients this year.
Okay. Any questions for Erica?
I'll just mention, not specifically, it relates to the emerging, it really relates to the legacy as well. But I think it's really important that, as a council, we have a work session item to really discuss this whole aid to agencies and the difference between the emerging and the legacy. I'd like, if we have staff memos that go back to the origination of this, what the, what the council discussion was at that point in time and the intent. This is something that Councilor Botchway kind of initiated, and we talked about it. I'd like to kind of review what that was, and then I think we need to have another discussion. I think there's, I think there's issues in terms of how much money is going to the legacy versus the emerging. And I think even looking at the minutes of the HCDC, there's questions and concerns about how we're defining the emerging. And before HCDC discusses that and tries to make that decision, I think we need to have that conversation at the council level based on how this whole thing was initiated. So, I mean, I will support this, but I would put forth, I think, I think we need to have more detailed discussion.
What did the rest of you think about that?
I would agree. And if we need the three or four to add it as a work session topic, I would agree with that.
Sure.
Same here. Yes.
Okay, so let's, you want a work session discussion about it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. You got that over there?
Yes.
All right. So now to the topic at hand, though, you know, I mean, your points.
The only comment I would make is, is the HCDC recommendation, obviously, we defer greatly to that. One, one nonprofit that I just want to highlight is the Johnson Clean Energy District. I do think that as we look at ramping up our climate action, action, it's going to be extremely important, moving into the future, that we identify robust nonprofits that can assist our community in reaching our goals. So we're not here to, you know, quibble with individual funding allocations, but I would want to highlight that. That is based upon a very successful nonprofit model in WinnaShie County that has been essential to making them being a leader. So just wanted to highlight that. It's something we need to think about moving forward. But for now, I think we need to defer to the HCDC recommendations.
Rockne, on that point, I think there is considerable potential with regard to the, what's the type?
Energy District, yeah.
But I note that there, I think it's $5,000 in the climate action grant program for
Yes. They did receive a climate action grant.
Yes, so it's really sort of startup effort.
Yes. It's not the same project that they proposed to HCDC, but along those same lines furthering your objective.
Yeah. But I think there's considerable potential there, so we'll have to revisit that at a, a point in the future.
About tonight.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion about this topic? I'm hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 15, fiscal year 20 legacy aid to agencies. This is a resolution allocating human services legacy aid to agencies funding for the fiscal year 2020, July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Could have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Cole. Discussion.
I'm not going to-
Hold on. I just noticed Erica's up there.
Sorry, Erica. Really quickly. So just again, the legacy agencies are defined as agencies that have existed as a legal entity for at least two years and have also received aid to agency funding in any of the last five years. HCDC recommended full funding for all applicants. This is a one-time increase in budgeted funds rather than the two-year cycle that we proposed last year. And HCDC also, they are reviewing the aid to agency process, and this was a new thing that we did this fiscal year, and we're planning to conduct another funding round in FY '20.
Thank you. Any questions for Erica? Okay, council discussion. Susan?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. And this goes back to that February meeting that unfortunately, I couldn't be here. But I, I had talked to three other counselors, you know, basically as I was sitting in O'Hare, and talked about this request for this big jump in the budget for the one time. And I, I just don't feel that that was, was an appropriate way to do it. I think as we look at the way we do our budgeting, and I know it was done for a one-year basis, but I'll tell you, I've talked to a number of the, the people involved in those agencies, and they were just absolutely shocked that that 150 or however much thousand was added, you know, to that budget. They certainly did not expect that. What they want, and I, and I agree with this, and with that work session request, what I would say is I think we need to talk in detail about all of our aid to agencies process, both for the emerging and for the legacy, and how do we, you know, how do we build in those incremental increases, but how do those also work with any bigger one-time dollars that we do? And if you recall, we had a memo from Jeff, I think, around that time, that talked about some of the other funding outside of aid to agencies that we were doing to those nonprofits and going back to things like the 1105 project, where I think we, I think the city did $100,000 match grant and some other things, you know, like that that we've done outside of this. And so on the one hand, I totally agree, we need to find a way to increase these dollars on kind of a systematic basis, so these agencies can continue to do the work. Obviously, their costs go up every year, just like ours do at the city. And certainly don't want any of these to, to miss out on federal funding, you know, grant opportunities and things like that. But I really think we need to have that whole discussion as part of that work session. But I just, I cannot agree with that one time. I don't think it was necessary, and I don't think procedurally it made sense. So I will not be supporting this.
The only thing I would say is, is that, as we talked about before, I think they just made the case. I mean, they made a very persuasive case that funding had remained flat for several years while flat for several years while population had gone up, as well as needs have gone up. So, we did indicate this was a one-time course correction, but that said, I think, in some respects, I viewed it as sort of resetting the deck a little bit, in terms of the previous flat funding that had been for a number of different years. I think Susan's right, though, budgeting does involve tough choices, but I think under these particular circumstances, they made a very compelling fact-based case. So that's why, it would have been nice, I mean, I know you were gone, but it was a very persuasive, data-driven presentation that I found compelling to warrant this.
Other comments?
I just basically agree with Rockne. I think I went into that discussion really with an open mind, in terms of, you know, we had the staff report, had not heard directly from the commission, and the commission made a very compelling, thoughtful, data-driven recommendation or support for their decision, and I voted accordingly, knowing, again, that this was a one-time allocation.
Anyone else?
Mayor, before you take a vote, if you were about to, if I could just get some clarification, so we can communicate to staff and the HCDC Commission. As Erica alluded to, HCDC has expressed an interest to revisit the aid to agency program themselves. Do you want us to press pause on that process, and allow council to schedule a work session, and so that you can give them some direction? Or are you okay with those processes working parallel?
That's kind of a broad statement, to revisit HCDC's, or the aid to agencies' process, or, you know, can you be more specific about what their desire is?
Sure, so at the past couple meetings, they've been kind of just reviewing what's working, what didn't work with the past funding round, and possibly coming up with proposed changes. I know they're also interested in discussing the funding amounts as well.
As I read the minutes, my sense was a lot of that, and help me if I'm wrong Erica, but is related to that difference between the legacy and the emerging, and also how the emerging are defined?
Yep, yep, that's included.
Okay. I think that discussion needs to start at council. I think this whole process of emerging versus legacy started here. I think, I think we need to have a discussion first at the council level, and then certainly either give them direction and let them flesh out more details, and/or if we decide we wanted to, we can either just give them direction, or we can give them our ideas and let them review it, and/or we could even have a joint meeting. But I think the discussion needs to start at the council level.
I agree. I think our job is to set policy, and so, that's what I would say. We should have the discussion here first.
I don't have a problem with it working in parallel. I think that it would be a conversation to have both bodies exchange ideas. Obviously, we would have the final say, but I don't have any problem with it working in parallel at the same time.
Yeah, I understand the idea that we set policy, but as we, even as we've, many of us have commented in reviewing their recommendations, I feel that HCDC is more familiar with kind of the rigor and the detailed aspects of this, that might help inform how we consider policy. So I certainly would be interested in their thoughts, and maybe, you know, in parallel is the way to go, I don't know.
I guess I would just question if in parallel is potentially a waste of their time, since we do set policy. And to me, where this all started was with this setting aside a certain amount of money for emerging agencies. I think one of the first things that we need to talk about as a council is, how do we define an emergence, an emerging agency? Because my sense is that it didn't get defined the way I recall, and my recollection may be wrong, that I recall our council discussion, in terms of looking at the minutes of the HCDC. So to me, that's one of the core things that we need to decide, how we think it should be defined. I'm not at all opposed to going through that discussion, giving it to HCDC, and then having them look at it, and if they wanted to come back and say, this is how you defined it, but we think you've missed something, we think there's some other options that you ought to look at, I'm more than open to having that kind of input from them. When it comes down to the detail of the individual agencies and who they allocate to, I'm still glad to deal with it.
Well, I mean, one thought I'm just having is, you know, how we have often staff provide it, before we deliberate, staff provides a memo to help inform that conversation, perhaps a memo from HCDC to help, you know, as a contributing, to contribute to the conversation?
Well, it sort of depends on what the conversation is going to focus on. Like, if the conversation is, do we want to have money go to legacy agencies versus emerging agencies? And if so, what do we mean by an emerging agency? If that's the question, that's something we should deal with. If the question is, how should the money be allocated? I want advice from HCDC. I don't want to be going through all those agencies and trying to figure out how to allocate the funds. And if there's some other way to frame the question, I'm open to hearing what that other way is, but...
So I guess we just need to get the votes on it, because my sense is, is that by getting that information from them, we'll have a richer discussion at our table. So that's why I'm supporting the parallels. I think I have two, so don't need to see what the other two think.
I'm not sure...
Richer discussion about what specifically?
Emerging versus legacy. They've been applying this for the last several years. We have, well...
No, this is the last year.
No.
This is the first year that we've done.
First year, okay. Well, they've applied it for this year, and so we need to get their feedback, in terms of how that first year went, and in terms of on the ground, how that went. I don't see that that's a problem. I mean, it's not a crisis if we decide to go first, but my recollection is, is that we're counting noses to determine which way we want to go.
I'm kind of in agreement with Susan. I think perhaps they didn't get adequate guidance from the council to begin with, on the definition of what we really meant by emerging versus the legacy, so I think it's more important that we discuss that.
We have a topic we need to discuss more thoroughly. What we have before us, though, is a motion, and it's about allocating the funds. And so far, we know that one person is, you know, Susan has said that she's not going to vote in favor, but do we need any more discussion about the allocation of funds before, about the motion before us? All right, I'm hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. So we do need...
Five to one.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, thank you. My bad.
Kelly probably has it right, but just for the public record.
Right, go ahead.
That's okay.
Yeah, so we do need to have a follow-up discussion about this particular question, about whether we want to act on our own with regard to emerging versus legacy and so on, or whether we want to seek the advice of HCDC. All right, item 16, council appointments. Applicants for council positions must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have three applicants for one unexpired term with a female balance requirement for the Airport Commission. And the applications are from Scott Clare, Manetta Gardenier, and Judy Foel. Scott is a man, so there's a problem. I would recommend Judy Foel, not without meaning anything derogatory toward...
Manetta.
Manetta Gardenier, she's clearly served well for two consecutive terms, and has great background. So are there any objections to appointing Judy Foel?
Nope.
I agree.
Okay, without objection, oh, you needed a motion, could have a motion to appoint Judy Foel.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 17, announcement of vacancies, new. Again, applicants must reside, now, as I said, and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term to the Housing and Community Development Commission, effective upon appointment, and the term runs to June 30, 2021. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 9, 2019. Item 18, announcement of vacancies, previous. We have one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, plus a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 25, 2019. We also have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street District vacancies. For those positions will remain open until filled. Item 19 is community comment. Is there anyone who wants to address this, who didn't have a chance to speak earlier? I see no one, so. Item 20, city council information. Could we start with, who was I going to start with? Start with Pauline, and move to the right? And we could condense the other stuff that we usually do into this, conflate them, put them together. So if you have other notes for the work session stuff about the agencies, or boards, or commissions that you're serving on, please do it.
Good. I was going to ask if we could do that, because I just had a couple of meetings that I'd gone to last Wednesday, several others of us also attended the MPO meeting, which is always a great thing to hear about, to update on projects, and the trail projects, and the rail, ride the rails, which I know at a previous meeting, some of you reported that you'd had the opportunity to ride the rail, and they're still interested in that project, talking that it could be another year or so yet before we might see anything with that. They also talked about the trail projects, and hand out the new trails map, which is, it's exciting, because the cover girl on the front is a community young lady that's part of the women bike group that bikes to school. This one in particular, apparently from Weber Elementary to school, so that's exciting. So we'll be seeing these new maps out. Then on Thursday, I went to the Chief Elected Officials/Regional Workforce Development Meeting in Cedar Rapids. That's a regional with 10, or seven counties represented, Benton, Lynn, Jones, Johnson, Iowa, Washington, and Cedar, so it's a large group. But it's, that's, like the MPO, that's great also to see people from other counties, and having some of the similar things that we're going through, under member announcements on the agenda. Representatives from all of the areas talked about their concern with the condition of the roads, with the rough winter, and the availability of the materials to repair the roads, because we'd heard that also, that that was a challenge, and that the price went up on those materials. So other communities are suffering that same problem. They announced that this week, part of it is the workforce development, of course, and they announced a new website. It's going to be a new system for the Iowa Jobs Work Section, and they showed a preview of that, for job seekers, employers, and the provider agencies, iowaworks.gov. And people can do more without having to rely on a human, they just go in. People like me that are technically challenged might have an issue, but particularly the younger folks, that's, that'll be a great opportunity for them to do that. And as far as community activities, this Saturday is the Longfellow Front Porch Festival, somewhere in the Longfellow neighborhood, but that's something that happens throughout the summer in the different neighborhoods, so that'll be a fun thing, which that's also remembered as...
Terrific event.
Presented, yeah, it's always a fun event. Wear Orange Day, don't forget to wear orange for the Iowa Moms Demand Action. And then just a reminder to folks that with summer gearing up, farmers markets, the Friday night concerts, parties in the park, Pride Fest, the Juneteenth celebration, many, many things going on, so keep an eye out for those things.
Great, thanks. Bruce?
All right, so I was able to attend the MPO JC meeting that was held last Wednesday, and that was held at the North Liberty City Hall. After that, John and I attended a listening post, which I'll defer that to you, to kind of give updates about. And then after that, I actually went to Houses and Homes, they had a fundraiser at Hudson's later that night, and that was a great event, and it was well-attended. On Saturday, I got the opportunity, well, this weekend, we experienced Summer of the Arts event downtown with the Arts Fest, and that was a collaboration with various entities, of course, City of Iowa City. That was a fabulous event, lots and lots of people attended, it was super crowded, so that was a good, that was a good thing. I was able to attend on this past Thursday, it was Faith Academy, they're affiliated with Parkview Church and The Spot. They have grades, I believe it might be K through 6, but I know it's 6th grade, so maybe it's 1st through 6th grade, where they started the school, and they developed each grade each year. And so, this was the first graduating class, and there were some people that had, some scholars that had started, they were a part of the first class ever. So that was great to see. Other than that, lots of things going on in our great city. I encourage people to get out, as Pauline said, because this month, June is Pride Month, there's a lot of events happening. Hunger Banquet is going to go on next with the community. They have a Hunger Banquet that's going to go on the 13th of June, as well as Juneteenth, has a couple of events that are going to be happening. So I do encourage people to get out and just enjoy the summer that is approaching, as well as all these great events.
Great, Rockne?
And Jim, just to clarify, you're not wanting to go over any packet material or anything like that now? You said you're condensing a few things, right?
Not the packet material.
So, several different things. First off, I don't know if any of the community has been able to be downtown and see all the wonderful landscaping that we have, both in front of City Hall, as well as our city Ped Mall. I mean, it is spectacular, and so if, all you out there listening, if you have not been downtown to see the landscaping at the Ped Mall, I think it's just phenomenal. These sort of beautiful exotic plants, I had no idea such plants could even grow in this sort of city. And even a friend of mine, when I posted something on Facebook, thought it looked like a truffula tree from Dr. Seuss. It was, it was that good. So major kudos to our landscaping, you know, everyone that we've worked with, I think it's just incredible, accomplished. One of the things that Jim and I and Susan had done a day or two ago was our Economic Development Committee meeting. We had a very good discussion on our use of the property tax abatement, and I think that is going to be a really key tool, moving forward, as we look at how we're going to incentivize potentially renewable infrastructure. We do have a lot of limitations in terms of what we can require, but as we look forward in terms of our property tax abatement, using it for potentially affordable housing, using it potentially for renewable energy infrastructure, one idea that even was at least bandied about was this concept of childcare, you know, providing additional incentives for those sorts of infrastructures. Complicated issue, but I think certainly as our community moves forward, we need to have a lot of continuing conversations about using the tools that we do have. It was the end of the school year, and I just want to thank the Iowa City School District for another wonderful year of fantastic administration, and all these new projects coming in line. It was great to see the school year come to an end and the summer beginning. And finally, we met with the City of Literature, and we're in the process of reviewing what's on schedule for next year. So it was a real productive meeting, and we're in the process of sort of identifying what's in store. So that's pretty much it for now.
Well, I'll mention, related to the MPO, you know, their Board of Supervisors, the Johnson County Board of Supervisors is represented on the board, and at our last meeting, you know, I expressed, you know, concerns about the fatality, the bicycle fatality down near the Johnson County Fairgrounds. I actually, on the tour of the Crandic Line, had kind of preliminarily discussed it with a couple of board members, and, you know, they were interested, and as it turns out, and I learned this at the MPO meeting, you know, I'd already prepared a draft, you know, letter that, you know, we talked about sending to the board, that they'd already had a budget item planned, which would be to build a shoulder on those portions of Old 218 that didn't have a shoulder. So that's their response to the situation, you know, that contributed most likely to the, you know, to the problems, the lack of safety along that section of the corridor, so that, that issue is closed for now. And then after that, as Bruce said, we had our listening post, it was a busy night that day, and, you know, is it Lemme Elementary? try to get a sense of what's, what's going on in different parts of Iowa City. Well, in this case, most of the attendees were from the Hundred Grannies, so it was, that was, that was the focus. It was a very lively conversation, and we suggested that they send material, which I think we've all received, which I think is useful, because often, especially on an issue such as climate action, that's a very, very broad topic. So it's useful, in my mind, in suggesting that they submit some materials that they might find, that we might find useful, that we get an idea of where they're coming from on climate action. So I hope you had a, you have a chance to review those. And I'll leave it at that for now.
With the access center, we're continuing to move forward. We're going to have a two-hour session looking at some of the branding ideas from Meld and trying to move forward with getting a name and a brand and, you know, all those kinds of things. So looking forward to some progress on that. And would just like to add, you know, Pauline kind of made the comment, we're, you know, school's out, we're into the summer, and certainly take advantage, the rain has quit for a day or two at least, but just, I just hope people take advantage of all the great activities that we have in Iowa City and Johnson County over the summer, whether it's the various festivals, you know, the parties in the park, get out on your bike, go down to Terry True Blood, whatever it might be. Summer in Iowa is short, so get out and enjoy it, and be safe.
Great. Well, I have a few things to mention. Simon, a couple of police officers, and I participated in the Partnership for Alcohol Safety meeting on May the 23rd. And there's a little bit of restructuring going on, so in the future, Melissa Shivers and I are going to act primarily, or the mayor and the person in Melissa's position are going to act primarily as sponsors and attend periodically or regularly if we, either of us want to. But the people who will be chairing the meetings will be Tanya Vilhauer from the university and Nancy Byrd from the downtown district. So then, and the overall organization is going to meet quarterly, which is pretty much what it does now, but it's also subdivided into four committees, and that's the key thing, because there's some work being done at the committee level. So one is education and training, a second is regulatory environments, a third is marketing, and the fourth is place management. So I think some good work taking place at a deeper level now in the Partnership for Alcohol Safety than had been the case before. Likewise, not likewise, also, the Metro Coalition is going to be holding its post-legislative session meeting on June the 18th. That's correct about the date, isn't it, Jeff? That's what I have written down.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and I don't know, we and I haven't talked about it, but I'm hoping that both of us can go up to it. All right, so there's that, and then I have a few things I want to mention about other stuff going on, so look at this kind of quickly. Was it yesterday? Yeah, just yesterday, Jeff, Ashley, and I met with student climate strikers, and that was a pretty interesting conversation. They're clearly quite passionate and committed and motivated for very good and clear reasons. And we had a very fruitful conversation with them in the spirit of dialogue, you know. But I would say, it seemed pretty clear to me that they and a couple adults' allies who came with them did not know some basic facts about the situation we face. For example, that 53% of our carbon emissions are generated by Mid-American and its electricity generation process, and the University of Iowa's power plant. So we have no control over what those two organizations do. And likewise, they did not know that the state has preempted our power to have stricter energy efficiency standards than what the state code currently calls for. So when people say, "We should be requiring net-zero, new construction to meet net-zero carbon emission requirements," we can't. So I think we got that, those kinds of points across to them pretty well, but they're also driven by their passionate desire to make change happen very quickly. And I think it was a good meeting. I'm happy we did it, and we'll see what comes of it. Let me mention just a couple other things, I guess. The U of I Flood Center is celebrating its 10th anniversary on Thursday. It's going to be an all-day celebration over in the power, not the power plant, the hydrological building across the river. Be a good thing for any of you to go to if you can. And let's see--
That's the 13th, Jim, isn't it?
What did I say?
You just said Thursday. So it's a week from Thursday.
Is it a week from Thursday? I thought it was on the 6th.
I have the 13th.
Well, I make mistakes like that all the time, I'm afraid, so--
You all need to check.
Yeah, double-check the date. Sorry. Yeah. Let's see. I'm going to mention two other things out of a fairly long list I have. I want you to know that I have been contacted by members of Mayor de Blasio's campaign staff about his interest in possibly doing a walking tour of downtown. And I've said to them, "I'd be happy to do that with you, so long as it's understood that I would make a similar offer to any other candidate for president, regardless of party," or anybody, I'm the governor, "or anybody else who had a similar kind of interest." So it could well be that there will be such a walking tour Sunday afternoon, probably around 6:00. It's not been confirmed yet, so I don't know for certain, but I don't want to catch you by surprise if, in fact, that happens. The other thing I guess I will mention is, I want to ask you whether any of you intend, want, plan to attend the Mayor's Innovation Project on August 1 through 3 in Columbia, South Carolina?
I cannot.
I'm seeing a no.
I would like to, but I can't.
I can't either.
I'm seeing a no. Seeing a no.
Check.
I mean, I just want to tell--
I would love to.
Yeah, I responded personally. I'm not--
Okay.
Unless they wanted to move the conference for me, then I could go.
Yeah. Well, maybe we could have them come here.
Yeah.
I'm serious about that. It'd be a good thing to do.
It's August 1 through 3, did you say?
Yes. If no council member can go, I think it would be great if one staff member went. And of course, that's your call there, Jeff, but, okay, so I have other things I could mention, but I won't. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley?
We put out the chip-in survey on social media last Friday, so strategic priorities of our residents can provide feedback based on your existing strategic plan initiatives, and keep watching for it. We'll be pushing out more over the course of the summer and appearing at the farmer's market and Party in the Park nearing the fiscal year kickoff on July 1st, so watch for more information.
Okey-dokey. The owner? Kelly? Okay, so I think we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn to the work session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by me, I'm the second, by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned to the work session, and let's try to be brief about this if we can.